Is there any plans of what he was gonna do with it?
I just heard it now.
Oh, I see.
At one time, quite a while ago, he was talking about acquiring that.
Did that happen? Come on, good on that disk.
That's the credit even getting involved now.
Yeah. Well, the six to six would be an improvement if that was gone.
You didn't grow up.
I know, but what good is it?
True. I think it's a memory. That is the oldest commercial building in the world.
USC. Um, yeah. I have heard that, and I know that there's a lot of establishment there.
Yeah.
But at the same time, there's a lot of the office. If you would just even make the front look.
Finish.
Yeah.
Finish. We started, yeah. Started that. At least ten years ago. It's beautiful.
Yeah.
So, you say for us like?
Well, we were fast. He said the skiers are open and they should get to him as well.
So, well, um, yeah.
But they always open their way. I don't know how to do it. Cause of like a moose and they won't even think about making snow going down creases every day.
Yeah, they stay away.
It is good to be here.
When was that? Two couple of weeks.
I think so.
Spring got boring. All the order.
Wait for it. I had to work Saturday day at a store.
Oh, jeez.
So, it's just constant trying to be one of their work.
I was not there either.
Yeah, you still celebrate.
So, two hours?
Two hours.
Yeah.
Oh. I did it a couple of seasons ago. If you want to put me in there, I can.
Yeah, well, that's just, it's like too far aside.
What's that?
You know.
Oh, there it is.
Here.
Okay.
How's it going?
All right.
Ah, too bad.
Good.
What about you?
Two things there for you to sign right away.
All right.
The canvassing board here, the other guy is already signed.
Okay.
So, isn't there something more modern than canvassing? Like some.
Sort of.
Little ripstop.
Sort of.
Yeah.
Perfect word.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions?
Actually, just leave spaces for however many members there might be.
Yeah.
And then that's one underneath the pan once you decide.
Okay.
They're all signed.
And this is a.
Okay. And I'll have you sign.
Sign it, yep.
Colin's got vacation.
He's at his cabin. He's on T A Friday.
I do.
It's just like. Oh, crap. No, what? Yeah, just like change the time.
Oh, yeah.
Times makes Randy Barbie high.
No. Can you give me a brief?
We already heard it. What we would do for the last couple of hours.
Yeah. Okay, tell me if I had your. Mike, I still owe you. If I didn't collect it, I probably would have. Yeah. The story is, um.
I remember her about David. He's very transparent. Well, it's officially the time for him to do the pledge and convening the order. Who's here? Hey. Yeah, sure.
Sorry, too soon. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, undeniably indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Look at the recent elections and all the demonstrations. Seems like this would be.
The end of the. I don't feel like the end of the.
Well, people keep a comment at the beginning. I'm a citizen.
Well, on that note, we'll call the November fifteenth, twenty sixteen city council meeting order. Um, council member present. Uh, say engineer Ryan, but engineer Ryan is not there. Welcome.
Uh, Josh Polk.
Engineer. There's some comments. I guess I'm just going to address the council on anything out on the agenda.
I'm not sitting with you.
I'm not sitting under. Being none, then we can move on to adopt the agenda. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
Yeah, there's two things that, um, I wanna bring up. First one is Connie would like the Bergen Circle drainage added to the agenda issue. And then secondly, um, Chief Lee would like to talk to the council about trying to do some site work to the fire hall site, try to cut a little bit of that hill down. Um, but anyway.
For that, we go under new business?
Yeah, I guess so.
You're saying, are they all just moving around?
Well, the fire hall could be.
Fire hall thing could be new business.
It could be either one of them and the Bergen Circle one, depending what you wanna do with that. I think Scott wants to say something about that. Before you pull it on adopting the agenda.
I can't, yeah, no, thank you. Mark forwarded that to me and I, I, I looked at it very quickly and it left a message from Mark and I was driving down, but, um, it's something we certainly can look at, but I, I've looked at it. I don't see that there's anything different there right now that I, or it's been explained to me from a legal standpoint. Mark's questioning me when he forwarded this was, you know, what are cities typically doing in this type of situation? And you already taking staff to try to review it, look at it, you've had staff look at it, you did the city engineer's office look at it as well. Um, I, I certainly can look at it if that's what you wanna do. You gotta direct me to do that, I suppose, along with Joel or you or someone else from, from your office, uh, as well as Mark. Uh, I, I don't think it's fruitful to keep bringing it back every meeting unless it's actually been looked at. This information, I again, I looked at it very quickly, five, ten minutes at best. A lot of it I've seen before. Um, there's references to easel ones in the past and things like that that certainly if we can look at and sort out, that might be helpful. Um, but I'm not sure it's something you should put on the council's agenda for tonight. I, I can't respond to it. I don't think Mark can, I don't know if you can. Uh, Joel's not here, he's the one who looked at it before. So, I, I really think, and I, my comment before even adding it to the agenda is going to be, this needs to be looked at if you as a council wants to look at it further. Um, the reality is, I don't think the project was built incorrectly. Joel's looked at that and said it meets the design standard that was there. Um, water does run downhill. If there's another solution, maybe that's where you want us to try to look at it. But from a legal standpoint, what I see there, what these ones are, et cetera, et cetera, it doesn't change what I would tell you to do, which is either look at it differently or not put it on the agenda and direct staff to look at it further.
And, and how would you like us to look at it differently?
I don't know, because the information isn't different to me. That, I guess that's what I'm trying to say. And I, I, um, I, I haven't pulled out all the plat maps from before. We looked at that previously to see what was there, what we thought was there. Certainly Joel's office did that as well to say, you know, the project in nineteen ninety-nine did what the final plan set up was supposed to do. Now, if that's not the solutions everybody's looking for, I know there were other proposals out there, but that's not what was selected. That's not what the council chose to do based on what the input was from residents. That may have led to a different result, but that's, you know, we're talking eighteen years ago now, seventeen, eighteen years ago. Um, so I'm not sure there's much to discuss unless you give staff the ability to look at it further. And I'm not sure what that means, because I, I looked at it very quickly. That's what I tell them. So, I say differently, I'm not sure what that means.
Yeah, I'm, I'm thinking there's only so many angles you can look at it from.
Yeah.
If we've done through sixty, what more?
Well, I mean, you, you authorized to look at where the water runs and things like that, and we're getting way deeper discussion than for, for setting the agenda here, but, um, it showed what the plans were built to be and how the water was set to run off. It, it does exactly what it was designed to do.
Now, so there's a problem, yes. Um, is the city liable or does the city have a responsibility to take care of that problem? Um, that would be the only thing that you would be looking at. And at this point, we're saying no.
Typically, the answer is no.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, on that type of situation, cause water was moved and it's allowed to move. Um, the project was designed the way it was. Uh, properties that are downhill, and you can see from the pictures even that you've seen before, it clearly does run water there. That's the reality. That doesn't mean there's a solution or a city solution. Certainly there's alternatives, and Joel's talked about those already at previous meetings. So, that's why I'm saying I'm not sure it's fruitful to have that discussion tonight, unless you direct us as staff to do something different.
I don't see that tonight we could.
No.
Change anything.
Quick comment. The original blueprint had the culvert in it. What the city completed did not.
If that had been installed, perhaps that would have cut off a lot of that water before it got so far. It wasn't wanted, it wasn't chosen to be done. This is an exceptional year. We've had saturated soils all summer long, so a half an inch of rain on saturated soil looks like a lot, lot more than it would under normal conditions. Um. I certainly don't want to put it on the agenda for tonight.
I don't think there's any, any result.
Certainly not tonight.
Right.
Now, could we revisit this, um, in December's meeting? There be anything further? I got this package information this afternoon myself. I had a little bit of time to look through it. Went on the county website and, you know, took the parcel viewer and didn't see anything that changed my mind there, but, uh.
And the only suggestion I have is, is Mark and myself along with the engineer's office, you can come real quickly and see if there's anything else to bring back to at the next meeting, but no, I can't react sort of beyond what, what I've seen there and because I'm ashamed of what we've looked at before.
Fred, comment? I think you're right. So, are there any other corrections for Ken's, for Mike's agenda? And then do we have a motion to accept the agenda with that one addition of the fire hall land shaping?
I'll meet that.
Second, if then. On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passed. Consent agenda. Is there anything that should be removed from the consent agenda or do we have a motion to accept that?
So moved.
Second. On favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. And, oh, Mr. Pesta is here. So, then we move on to presentations, public hearings. Jeff Pesta, superintendent as a presentation tourist on the, uh, Public School Facility Improvement Plan to help the podium and. Is that your president?
All right. Let me know where I just came from. And Mark, did things go in the packet that I had sent to you?
Yeah, they're in the packet.
All right. So, um, just to introduce again, Jeff Pesta, superintendent for the KW Schools and, um, been in, uh, in the school system here for almost two years now. And one of the things that I had kinda pitched to both cities is, uh, the opportunity to collaborate with, um, with the communities, just talk about what kinda things we can partner on, what type of things we might be doing that you're aware of, so we're not interfering with each other's past, or things that the cities, cities are doing and that we're aware of it. And, um, kind of, um, work towards those things that I think the school system, a healthy school system can add to the value of the community. And sometimes it takes, um, um, both the city and the, and the school leadership working together on that. Uh, one of the things I had talked to, um, um, Mark and Mike about possibly coming as a, as a topic to talk about is, we have been working as a school district on a facilities improvement plan that was triggered by a new funding mechanism that is available that went into past July first. I think it's phased in over three years. It takes a lot of funding that went to schools for health and safety projects, but they had to meet the criteria for health and safety, or it had to be deferred maintenance on your, your buildings, but it had to meet various specific criteria. And now it's a little bit more open and it's a better funding stream and it gets faded in over three years. So, when people, um, hear that we're working on a facilities improvement plan, they start seeing things happening and they're wondering, oh, where did school also get all this money from? It's really different funding streams that came from the state that are kind of working in harmony now and they're enhanced through some recent legislation. So, uh, we wanted to share a little bit about what the strategic planning is that we're also going on with our school board and in particular, talk about facilities. And then there's been some other issues that we've, um, talked about partnering, collaborating on between the cities of Canyon and Wamamingo and, um, the public school district. Before I go into those, you know, I'll often refer to Canyon, Wamamingo, uh, because obviously, uh, our district is covering two hundred and twenty-one square miles of rural territory with two major communities in Canyon and Wamamingo. And I tell, um, the, the city officials at both places, there's three hundred and forty-eight public school districts in the state of Minnesota and only one of them has Canyon in the name and only one of them has Wamamingo in the name. So, there's, you know, reason for us to be interested in, in collaborating as much as possible. So, I'll kinda go through the, the things that I presented in your packet and they're just, I didn't make it special for this meeting. There are things that our, um, school board is doing in their strategic planning process. One of the things is, um, doing some fresh branding in conjunction with our strategic plan. So, you'll see in the packet, we, uh, board will be approving three logos and we're, we're doing something a little bit different. We're really elevating what we do with pre-kindergarten programs. Um, we've reorganized how we do that and added different staff. And so, they're on an equal playing field in our strategic plan for what we do in the community and they each have their own logo. So, we have the little knight, um, carries around a crayon and not a sword. It's probably a good thing for a little knight. Um, the knights in training is the, the K four program over in Wamamingo, that's their logo. And then knights is for the grade five through twelfth grade program at the high school and it's also the district logo. So, uh, we certainly appreciate when people, uh, whether they're using, um, Canyon Viking or Wamamingo Bulldogs or old, uh, retro, um, logos and, and hats and shirts and stuff like that. We like all that stuff too, but moving forward, like our official, um, documents in our official things like what's on the middle of the gym floor and stuff are the official logos that we have and the official colors. Uh, we also want to encourage the people in the communities, uh, just came from the county meeting and we've talked about anybody that's in these communities can use these logos. Uh, they're not, we haven't trademarked them or copyrighted them, um, yet, and if we did, we would still extend that onto you. The only thing that, um, we ask that you contact the school about is if you say the Canyon, Wamamingo Public Schools or Canyon, Wamamingo High School, wherever it is, and that's interconnected to a promotion you're doing or something, we wanna know about that. Otherwise, just, these belong to the community. That's, I think, a part of our identity that we hope that we share and if a business or, um, you know, you have the banners down, down Main Street and, and, um, using KW logos, we certainly appreciate all that coverage as well. We're also interested if people, um, wanna expand that community identity. Anything from, um, new ideas for, yeah, something we came up with, we wanna put knight stencils on the fire hydrants. Well, we're open to that and we're open to all the way up to, we'll help you paint a knight logo on the water tower if you want to. I, you know, because you see some communities, that's really a strong part of their identity and, and we certainly will support that. Um, we're working with a, a local business called Right Smart that's helping us redo our website. It, um, needed a lot of work and so we're actually creating a parallel website that we'll open up and transition over to, uh, right after the winter break. And, um, you'll see a lot of slogans and branding, uh, you know. So, concepts like like a knight. So, when we're over at Christmas in Canyon, on December third over at the library, right over there, it'll be read, uh, read like a knight and we'll have teachers and principals and myself coming over there, mayors and whoever else we can get to come and read holiday books to the kids and it's read like a knight. So, it's this knight concept of what, um, what is the character education and what we expect of our, our knights and I think most of the time to make our community very proud. So, just kinda shared a little bit of that background with you. The next document that you have, and quick, we're open to suggestions on anything from slogans to core values, whatever, those are all a work in progress. Uh, that's what's on there. Um, the next document that we, we shared with you is, from a strategic planning standpoint, the district really had a look at, um, what is its future as far as student enrollment? That's a lifeblood of the district. And if we don't actively do anything, uh, based on our census and just the, um, housing and whatever that's available, you can anticipate that the student enrollment is gonna steadily decrease. That doesn't make it a bad district. In fact, we like being small, but being smaller means that ultimately we can offer less things. Um, and if that's the direction that the board wanted to go in, that's fine, but they need to understand what that process will look like and it may be difficult at some point to maintain schools in, in both communities. Uh, another plan to look at was a balanced census where there's usually based on the census, about nine hundred students in our, that are living in our school district. Some will open enroll, uh, uh, out for various reasons. Some will come in. We wanna get that balance. We had a net loss of students to other districts. Uh, we've cut that in half in one year and are looking to really minimize that down to where, yeah, we may have fifty kids for whatever reason, parents work, um, other connections where they open enroll to another district. Um, but we have, you know, the same amount of kids coming back in from our perimeter and coming in. We actually had a lot of students come in past years from West Concord that are, um, now attending the Canyon, Wamamingo Schools because that's where they have a historic or felt like, uh, they're, they had good opportunities there. So, we're, our board is choosing for the balanced approach. There's also another approach would be targeting growth, trying to increase the number of students that attend here up to the maximum space that we have. Uh, we're not far from that right now. Um, but that would really include doing some significant things like creating magnet programs of like, like an immersion school or a tech school or, um, participating in a integration plan with a school like Bearable where students, um, um, from diverse backgrounds have the opportunity to transfer over here. And now the board, the board is saying, let's focus on maximizing the space that we have and, um, we're not gonna, we're not gonna carry away here. Let's really focus on the balance model. So, that's where they are right now. And, uh, so some of the bullet points on that are just about, uh, I used to kinda set up for coding on it. It's green, green, red or yellow. Um, what speed you wanna move at as far as dealing with the district. Next document kinda leads us, I think, to our facilities, which is. Okay. We have a, so it's one of them. Maybe it was the first one that you had up there was the dream like a knight.
Maybe a best one.
There we go. That's it. And that's really what I'm here to talk to you about, just wanna give you a little bit more background is, um, keeping on that theme of doing things like a knight and the older kids roll them out for the younger kids and so forth. Um, we wanted to go to our school board and to our staff and basically tell them, encourage them to dream like a knight. What, what would you like to have in your school facilities and in your community if there were no limits? Just go ahead and dream. We got indoor swimming pools, hockey rinks, we got all kinds of stuff. And we said, that's fine. Um, in the end, we got that whole list. Some aren't gonna be that practical because they're not, really not sustainable or they're extremely expensive. Um, but eventually we got some really great ideas, um, and we, uh, winnowed those down to some, um, very specific ones. And we're also using that, now that long-term facilities funding stream that is, is phasing in over the past three years. And we've actually targeted some things and began to do some of those things. And I wanted to explain a little bit. Um, sometimes people will look at something like, hey, you got a new parking lot, but you only get half of it. Didn't you know there was another half? And we wanna get out to the community that, that we, this is part of a, a, a plan. That's how much money we had to spend this year. So, we got that part done rather than wait till, um, somebody disappears into a crater in the parking lot. Let's get one part fixed and then we'll stage. And so, we're doing a pay as you go model right now as that money pays, pays in. But over time, the, the district kinda got into, uh, they had to do some budget cuts. Um, they've had some unstable enrollment and they kinda got this overall, uh, mentality that there's no money to spend and we can't improve anything. And not only do we have a different kinda funding stream on that, but when we plan strategically, we do have money to do things and, um, we can present to the community some of the other, um, dreams that we have as we dream like a knight. So, this first year, we pretty much finished off, um, the baseball softball complex over Wamamingo. We've just finished the junior high or the junior varsity field. So, the varsity, junior varsity, baseball and softball fields are in Wamamingo. And you know, um, there needs to be a balance between Canyon and Wamamingo. Everything can't be in Canyon, everything can't be in Wamamingo. So, most of the, with the high school being here, most of the sports things were located in Canyon. Um, the baseball softball field is one way of really having an identity for Wamamingo and it, I'm sure a lot of you have been there and it's, it's a really nice community ballpark complex. So, we're pretty much finishing that off with the, with the file JV field right now. Um, we upgraded the main parking lot over at the high school. We left the last part closest to the school unfinished because we have a greater long-term plan to redo the entrance to the school. We need to for security reasons, but also for aesthetics. Um, and the landscaping has aged to the point where it's really difficult to man, to maintain. So, we, we are definitely moving forward on that front entrance. And we wanted to make sure that the front entrance and the parking lot come together, how we flow traffic through, how, um, um, some of our, um, senior citizens and other people who aren't as mobile, how they get in the school. We always have issues with in the wintertime, people trying to get in for events and everything. It's just not really, um, as functional as we like it to be. So, we'll have those two parts come together here in the second year. Um, we are undergoing an engineering study and we'll have a group of, uh, school engineers coming, uh, engineers and architects presenting on November twenty eighth at our school board meeting, taking the ideas that we've dreamt up and turning them into some sketches and some ideas, some ballpark figures. We may or may not work with that company, but they're, it's our first attempt at visualizing what we were thinking of doing here with the entrance. And, um, uh, we really need to look at our athletic complex. We've had a track, um, that's kind of a cylinder-based track that's really worn out and hard to maintain. We've had excellent, uh, uh, excellent achievement by our track athletes over the years and I'm not sure how they do that because they don't really have the facilities to train on very well. So, uh, with this launch of facilities funding, we can actually replace similar things. No one will replace the track the same way we had before. So, we can upgrade that to a competition level track and we can use that funding stream for us. We just need to bunch it together. Um, so you'd take like two years of funding and bunch it together. So, the plan is to look at that, uh, updating that track within the next year or so. We wanna make sure that it's not done piecemeal, that the football field has to be, make sure that it's the way that we want it to and the track has to fit there. So, we're gonna be looking at that on the twenty eighth. Would it be in the same spot or would it have to move to another open area in Canyon, um, distinct from the football field, wherever? So, that whole complex, we start with putting the whole plan together and then working through it as we can afford those things. But the pieces, you know, the money comes in chunks, the pieces all fit together in a master plan. a master plan. And then, not very exciting, as you know, if you work for or represent the city, things like roofing maintenance and stuff are not really exciting, but if you don't do them, we all know what happens. So we have a roofing maintenance cycle that we need to begin again, and we'll do the first part of that beginning this year. One of the last things that we're going to do, and we waited for the elections to be finished, waiting for our new school board members to be seated, and also for this kind of initial peek ahead at what our facilities plan looks like. And then we are going to survey the community and say, these are the things that have risen to the top of our "Dream Like a Knight" list, and they are dreams. We're going to outline which ones we will pay for with the funding that we directly have access to and our school board has control over. One of the areas that has kind of risen to the top of the dream list is a multi-use facility that would be located and attached to the main gym. Like I mentioned, you may have noticed, this first, this year we also put in new scoreboards, refinished the gym floor in our, in our primary gym, and that looks really great if you haven't been in there. And we love our gym for hosting our, our big events, and that will continue what we on into long-term. But there's potential to attach to that, an extra space. We have another gym in the older part of the building, they call the middle school gym, that absolutely has to be addressed. It's, it's beyond, almost beyond usable at this point. And so we'd like to turn that into a space for special needs and pre-kindergarten students to use, for adaptive FIAAD and their activities and running around and doing all that kind of stuff, to be the right space for them. But our wrestling team currently uses that, our volleyball teams use that. It's not really a space that's, that's really conducive of what we're trying to do. So to create kind of like a fieldhouse, multi-use facility that basically is a couple more floors, not wood floors, but a sport court or something like that. If you saw the weight room that we use, we don't show pictures of it because people would wonder how we're even keeping it open. It's not a good situation. It's basically the backstage of an old theater with a bunch of weights in it. So we have a weight facility, trainer facility, and upgrade our locker room and restroom so that we have multiple options for what students need right now. There's some other additional things that could be, that could be connected with other than that functional space, such as a trap around it for indoor community use in the winter, or a trap on a second level with the spectating area. But this is really, even though it's a dream, it's really meant to be as a really functional kind of thing. So we'd be looking at, if the community is interested in bringing this out, then it would be a voter-approved project, and it most likely would, if, like, once again, if there's favorable response, it would be brought out in an election next year, a special election to, to vote on approving bonding for that. Bonding rates are extremely low right now. We just refunded a bond of our past HVAC project from years gone by and saved the district four hundred fifty-six thousand dollars just by refunding one bond. So the bond market is really good right now. So we want to see what people think about that. The space also could have a performance space. We have an old band shell that needs to be torn down, but it could be connected with that fieldhouse where you have a space where you could have outdoor graduations, you could have community concerts and things like that, and you could also just move them inside on the opposite side of it and, you know, if you had an outdoor graduation and it looked like thunderclouds would come in, you just switch it and have it inside the fieldhouse kind of things. Just that functional, improve what we have for capacity for athletics, our fine arts and our community education. So it's a dream. Our next step is to go out there and talk about, to the community and find out how interested they are and show them, you know, what, even though we think it'd be a pretty economical package, so they have to pay for it and they have to approve to pay for it. We also want to make sure that the cities know what we're thinking about doing because something like an outdoor performance space might be something that was on your wish list, and we don't want to step on each other's toes. We want to, we want to work together because there'd be spaces that obviously the community would use for regardless of the function is, you know, the school, school functions, and then we extend out the different levels of community use for the facilities to make them carry as much impact in the community as we can. So that's the nature of that, and I'll certainly answer any questions that you have about that. I'm primarily here just to share with you and get feedback and let you know that, you know, if you live within the school district, you're going to be communicated in a survey format to say, what do you think about this dream? Is it something that should be pursued and explored a little bit further? Or the timing on whether or not? My, my particular perspective on working through the board with this is, for the, you know, the students who are currently in, of school age, this may be an opportunity to put something in place that they can all use through their school career and into the future, that may or may not come by again as far as the cost of doing it, and the current enrollment that we have and stabilizing that, would make an ideal time to do that. So that's why it's a topic right now. There's also an enrollment issue that we've worked with between the city government in Canyon and Wanamango, and I'll leave that to Mark to introduce that, and I can certainly provide any background or help with that, if that's a topic that you want to bring up today.
Yeah, I didn't put it on the agenda, and I don't know if I was waiting to get another copy of that or what, but there's a resolution that Wanamango City Council did that basically addresses or is opposed to, if that's the right word, Jeff. Zambroda comes into Wanamango to pick up students. Right now they're open and roll out, and, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of concern with that, the fact that they cross border lines, and so they, I guess Wanamango kind of asked me if, you know, I'd have the council review this, and so I guess what I'd do is put it on the December agenda, if that's, I kind of wanted to bring it up first to see if there was a general interest in it.
My understanding of the open enrollment was, yes, you could enroll in whatever school, but you had to provide your own transportation. They're sending buses to another community, they're kind of poaching at students, you might say.
Did you have a copy of the Wanamango resolution, Mark? How did you give it one?
I, I might have it in my email, but...
I'll give you one just in case, in this extra copy. But just kind of update you, Wanamango did pass a resolution, and we wanted to frame it as supportive of the Canyon-Wanamango Schools and not negative about any other school district. But the background is that in the early 1990s, the state passes open enrollment law where you can enroll to another district. Your resident district is still responsible for educating you and paying any extra fees like special education costs or whatever, but your per pupil funding, the dollar amount that goes with the student follows them to the other district. Typically, the students need to get to the other district, their parents take them or whatever, or they can get into that district and get to a bus stop that's in that district. That's pretty much been the standard. In our area, between the nine districts that have a boundary with Canyon-Wanamango, we're a very expansive district, so we actually border nine other school districts. And there's a total of eleven districts that we either border or participate in a cooperative with us, such as the specialized cooperative, Gujare County Ed District. So out of those eleven districts, there's only one that transports students from out of another district without a mutual agreement, and that's Zambroda Mizepa. And that actually came about from a case in 2010 where a student had claimed that Canyon-Wanamango didn't provide the special need services that the student is entitled to. Went all the way to an administrative hearing. Canyon-Wanamango was found to be providing all the services, so there was nothing that resulted from that other than the family, I guess, due to the experience, decided they wanted their child to go to this Zambroda Mizepa school district, and Canyon-Wanamango agreed that they would transport them over there, and that would dump the shuttle van. That was 2010. From between 2010 and 2015, it expanded from a van to a bus, where it's picking up students and ultimately made its way into town, from rural stops into a town stop, and now it's stopped a block away from the elementary school, picks up students, and that number's increased to about fifty students that, that are open enroll, fifty, fifty-three that are open enroll there, and about thirty something that get picked up in the Canyon-Wanamango district and transported, transported over to Zambroda Mizepa. So we've been working with Zambroda Mizepa to try to sunset that, accepting responsibility that Canyon-Wanamango let that build up over time, but it's really not a sustainable model, and it could actually, long-term, impair the ability to operate a school in Wanamango if kids are being bused out to a neighboring district. Geography, you know, plays a big role in that. So Wanamango is very concerned about that. They understand that the school is a big part of their identity, they love having the kids over to the school, they want to ensure the future of their school long-term. So they passed a resolution in support of the schools and encouraging ZM to sunset that agreement. So it was a very supportive type resolution, not a finger-pointing thing, but they really wanted to stand up for their schools, and that's led to conversations where they want to put a sign. And at one point, realtors were advertising that parts of Wanamango that were being developed were part of the Zambroda Mizepa school district and all kinds of things that really got to be a mess. And so we're just trying to get that back under control, plan for the future. So Zambroda Mizepa is going to put a sign at the entrance to Nelson Drive out there on Highway 60. Kind of looks, I don't know if you'll see it from here, but it basically says, welcome to Wanamango, the city of Wanamango, and the Canyon-Wanamango Public School District home of the Knights. And you just think, yeah, if you come in there, it should be no mistake what school district that is, it's promoting us and not pointing a finger at anybody else kind of thing. So that's an ongoing thing. I know that Mike, the city administrator over at Wanamango, reached out to Mark and said, you know, we're doing this, could you have an interest in showing your support for the KW schools too? And so they've gone through that process, they're also doing some things, like I said, whether it's putting up banners and stencils and whatever, they really want, they're going to put a mural up on the bus garage in Wanamango with the little knights logo on it, or knights' training logos. They, they really want to further identify their community as part of the KW school district. That's their choice, certainly their choice, and we've already done this in Canyon with street signs, and as I just came over from Born Veteran Area today, I must have went by three or four "Bo Knights, you know, we're proud of you" signs, whatever. You know, the fire departments come out and escort kids off to their state tournaments and all kinds of stuff like that. So we really appreciate the support that we get from residents in the city of Canyon, and any additional boost that you have available, we're not shy about working with you on that. So that's kind of the nature of the presentation, and like, it all stemmed from just really, whether there's any issues or any projects to talk about, we want to talk anyway, even if you're just on a regular or semi-regular basis. And when you have things that you need support from the school district, and we participate in the Canyon Area Business Association, we try to participate in the community events and things like that, you know, there's a certain kind of life that gets injected into a district that only kids can do, you know, how hard we adults try, the kids have a, have a different knack for making things happen and making things exciting and interesting. If you observed any of the volleyball or football in the last week or two, you know that that just is a special thing that makes, makes the town exciting, gives the police chief a place to play his guitar at football games and stuff like that, so it's all, it's all good. We're open to anything in the future, and certainly, any questions or current things that you'd like to work on together, we're at your service. And I thank you for your attention and certain opening questions.
Frankly, the school and the city need each other. I think we stand or fall together, so it behooves us to cooperate as fully and as much as we can, as often as we can. Any other comments?
I know the gym is beautiful. It's really done great. And what we want to really express to people is, we're, we're maintaining the facilities that we have, they're, they're doing the job for us, we want to maintain them, we want to be good stewards of, of the investment that the community makes, and we want to kind of show off the things that we're doing with the funding that we have. And that kind of, I think, helps build some confidence that if, if there's an opportunity to add something that's missing, first we want to show what we're doing with the money we already have and the facilities we already have. And we want to distinguish between, personally, I don't like to cry wolf, if I ever came to the community and said, we need this, we absolutely need this, I want them to believe me. And so when I talk about some of the dreams that we have, those aren't needs, those are improvements, those are extras that may have great value for the community, that's up to the community to decide. But I don't want to come, come before the citizens saying we need something if we absolutely need it, because that, that does happen from time to time, and we want to make sure that the message is clear and distinguish between the needs and the, and the nice things they have.
It's taken me a while to get used to the Knights, and getting them to come around and the way the pro football Vikings are going, I don't miss the name Vikings very much anymore.
Well, the Knights came together long before I was, I was here, but it's worked well for us because there is so much in that identity that we can take advantage of. And like I said, when you see those logos, the Knights are supposed to be role models in a positive way for the Knights in training and, and the little Knights aspire to want to be like the big Knights, and that's, that's a community coming together. And we have a concert on Thursday, and they videotaped some, video recorded some things to put in about what makes KW great, and the thing that I said is, having worked in four larger school districts in, in my career, and interacting with, with administrators and teachers of some districts all around the state and around the country, the big push right now in education is take your giant school and try to break it down into smaller schools because it's a better experience for the kids. We've already got that going on, and we want to take advantage of it. It is, it is an amazing experience for, for people to be able to interact and have the opportunity and get to know each other on that scale, and we want to take advantage of that. At our Hall of Fame presentation this past fall, it was a really nice introduction by Randy Hockenson, he said, everybody's from somewhere, but all of you here that are going in the Hall of Fame, you're from here. They weren't from somewhere, but you're from here. And then, one after another went up there and talked about how, whether it was in the 50s, or the 90s, or 2005, what an impact growing up in a place, in a community like this that was supportive and had that overlapping layers of social capital and that connectivity, how it shaped their lives, and it was really an amazing testament to hear one after another go up and say that. So, so it is a, it is a place that certainly, that can be challenged, but there's so many assets that, that make it a, make it a great place.
Hey, did you?
All right.
Joe, we're going to engineering. I'll stay down in the fire facility garage.
Thank you, Mayor, and also the council. I won't, I believe you have Joe's memo that he crafted, so I'm not going to go into too great depth per se, but I would like to highlight just a few of the items that are listed. Particularly, progress is moving on relatively smoothly. It was last November 3rd, we had a regular monthly progress meeting with the USDA, and nothing out of the ordinary was noted at that meeting. As far as moving on to the, the topic of talking about subgrain gravel, one thing I'd like to point out is that the contractor at their own behest decided to use a geotextile fabric underneath the gravel base, and they did that at their own cost, it's for their convenience, and from an engineering perspective, that's, that's a good thing. It, it really helps with the geotechnical aspects of, of any parking lot or building and what have you, and so much so that what we valued that fabric was around eight thousand, so an extra eight thousand dollars in value at, at no cost to the city, so that was very cool to see. As far as the parking lot and curving, paving, all of that, the one thing to note is that the tubus plants across the region shut down pretty much the weekend of November 7th. Any, any paving that anybody wants to do, they're going to have to wait till, till spring, and I know you guys are all aware that you're going to look to do the remaining tubus next spring anyways, but that officially sealed the deal on, on that one. As far as the precast wall panels, I'm sure you all have driven by there, and those have been up, and there was an error in one, in the pattern on four of the precast panels, and so the city reviewed that along with us, and the consensus was that those wall panels could be left in place as long as there's a deduction coming. And I guess, I'm not sure where that exactly sits, if that's official or not, but something certainly to be aware of and consider. As far as previous items from last month, we did have pay request number two and change order three that the council had approved pending concurrence by USDA, and we did get concurrence from the USDA, so we're moving forward with that. Which brings us to the, the action requested for this evening, mainly with... Which brings us to the, the action requested for this evening, mainly with payment request number three. It roughly represents, I suppose you could say around pretty close to 50% of the work being performed, or that's been performed, and that has been included with this memo, and we recommend, just as with payment request number two, previously, we do recommend approval contingent on USDA occurrence. And with that, I guess I'll open it up to any questions that the council may have.
Well, I'm not sure how speed you are on the situation there, but, and I notice the insulation for the roof has been up there for, since last week something, and from the ground, it looks as though they got some of that put down, and then it seems to have come to a halt. Is there a reason for that?
I guess I, you're right, I haven't heard the specifics of that. I do know in general, within the construction community right now, there's a lot of pushing and pulling for contractors on various projects. I don't know if that has anything to do with this particular project, but, I don't know, maybe, you know, the city administrator has something that he might be aware of that I'm not, but I do know that we are, just as an industry as a whole, wrestling with a lot of contractors to keep pushing them to, to keep moving forwards.
There have a holdup on the adhesive that blew the product down. That's what the holdup is for the roof.
Oh. Okay, I'm glad to know there's a reason for it. I mean, just, I went to Concan, a little purple dude, and, and Mark, I don't know, do you have any something to say about the deduct on it?
Um, well, they agreed to deduct $10,000 total, so that'll be coming in some kind of a change order for the future, for the future of it.
So, at this point, that a motion to approve pay request number three would be in order in, you know, $440,308.26. Do we have such a motion? So, best, your side? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Or you have? So, then we can move on to legal. Update on property abatement at 411 votes.
After the last council meeting, as you approved the, the two abatement actions, service was made on all those persons, honestly residing, but at present at the property, and the chief did deal with that. We've made several attempts to deal with the record owners in Great Falls, Montana, and decided, in discussing with Mark and internally in my office, to do notice by publication. After we did that, then he called, so we did have contact again. He did say that he was willing, most likely, to sign an acceptance of the service. We haven't heard anything to this point in time, so we're going to continue and move forward with the publication by, or notice by, or service by publication. So, we'll, we'll cover it one way or the other. The key under the statute is serving him, it's not the people even here. We've done that as an extra service and notice to these persons that are occupying the property to make sure we can remove them, but the, the person that matters is the actual record owner, we talked about it for the last couple of evenings. So, we want to make sure that service is perfected, it's done properly, because then we can move forward with the abatement in whatever course of action that takes, but also then set the property back correctly. A judgmental question, have you served the record owner, because that's what the statute requires us to do? If he responds, great, if he doesn't, we'll be done with service very shortly, I think it's next week. Pam, how many times have we done it so far, do you remember?
It was, was it every week for
Four weeks, and I know I've done these two, I think, I don't know if it was this week and the next week, I think it's the final one, and then we'll be able to move forward with
In case the end of November
Exactly.
Certainly, yeah.
Yeah, exactly. That's been the only holdup, all the other folks, he was able to serve, so we've done that properly. Again, an extra step just to make sure we can remove those persons from the property, but that's where we're at right now. So, it's slowed down because of, and we thought we had great when we finally responded at one point, so there was no questions received in some capacity because we made the call back, but that's not what works under the statute.
No one said it was going to be easy.
No, I, I, I said that, that was the problem, in 2014 was the same type of service issue with this person. We thought we probably went and called, but it hasn't resulted in what we were hoping, so.
You know, he's still alive.
Still around.
That was a question.
Yeah, there was a question, is, is he still around, or a person purported to be still around, so.
Oh, that's a good point.
Yeah.
Purporting to be.
Yeah, well, and that's the issue, that's why we're continuing with what the statute requires.
Okay. Now, then we can move on to Todd Bornstein, property requests. A little bit complicated situation. We want to split one lot, combine a portion of that with another lot, oh, and also rezone a portion of that. But, we can approve all these things with one motion, correct?
Yeah, that's correct, yeah. No, it, it's ready to go, went through the planning commission last night, so it should be all set. It's exactly what you described, it's, I want to say straightforward.
I live next door, that's why I know exactly what you're doing.
Yeah, I was going to say, it's not straightforward, but it's descriptive, you see what's going on, yes, you can approve all of those and move forward.
And for that, we need a, well, first we need a motion, and second, then we need a motion to all vote.
I'm backing a motion.
And I'll second, then we can start.
In favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passed, wonderful. Um, update on, oh, we have to, now here.
Resoning.
Now, that was the rezoning, I guess we need another motion for the lot combination? That's the way it is in the, in here.
Lot, split lot combination.
Yeah, do that, I guess, have it separate, and then you got a mode of, that's why. I thought they were together, but now it's not.
I made that mistake.
No, I get it.
So, I'll make the motion that we approve the lot combination.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Go sell that thing, I'm a union neighbor. Update on Shirley Erickson's whole craft property request, this was something that was requested and has now been withdrawn.
Yeah, it was, it was withdrawn by the office.
So, we need, so more discussion or action on that? And updates data, data practices, policies, or just a housekeeping thing to reflect newer statute?
It is, and it's something we periodically have updated, it was timed, there've been some requests for these types of policies by various individuals. I talked with Mark and said, I think it's, it makes sense to update a couple of things that have occurred recently. Nothing out of the ordinary, everything in the policy basically is what staff is already doing, has been doing for quite some time, what it makes the policy compliant with all state laws at this, at this juncture right now. So, yes, the recommendation is to approve, and it's really a ministerial task, again, staff is following, reviewing the policy already.
Do we even need to make a motion?
Yeah, a motion, and it, it is one of our administrative policies, so motion second and, and vote would be appropriate.
All right, move on to the changes.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
And that passes. And we have nothing under old business currently. The new business, resolution 2016 dash 29, adopting a settlement for the Lincoln Utility Bill.